Okay, compliance through chapter 231 of the Open Public Meeting Act of the state of New Jersey. Adequate notice has been given to all members of the governing body, the local source and the Westfield leader. The two newspapers designated to receive such notice, the notice is also posted on the Borough Hall bulletin board as well as our website. So let's start with a salute to the flag. Okay, I.
I.
To the flag.
Flag.
United States of America.
And to the public.
Which is one nation, indivisible. With liberty and justice for all. Okay, let the record reflect that all members of council are present except for Rachel. We also have Matt Deanna, Glenn is on, Martha, our clerk, John Post, our attorney, Jill Good, our CFO, and Joe Gianuzzi, the chief of police, and did I say Mike Disco? Mike Disco also, okay?
And also Frank.
I got Frank, didn't I? No, he must have faded into the flag or something. Now, let's start with the appointment of the Union County Transportation Advisory Board. I think that, who does that? Mike and Bob? Is that?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the same as it's always been for the last few years, so we're just gonna continue.
Yep.
Well, the next one is the appointment of the fund commissioner to the suburban municipal joint insurance fund. I'm assuming that's you, Glenn?
It is, yes. We have one meeting a month, this month will be on Thursday and I'll represent the borough on that.
Okay, next we have the appointment of a DPW employee, Wayne Jennings. I guess he was the one that resulted from the interviews. Bob, is that the guys you chose?
Correct. It was basically Matt and Glenn. We let them have control of who they were gonna hire. So they interviewed a number of candidates and picked the best one that they thought for the position.
Okay, fantastic. Anybody have any questions of Glenn or Matt about Mr. Jennings? Does he have a CDL?
Yes.
He does.
He does, okay, good. Okay, next we have a raffle application for Our Lady of Lords for a 50/50 off-premise draw raffle. So I'm assuming nobody really has a problem with that. That's pretty routine. Martha, all the paperwork is in?
Yes, it is.
Okay, good. Okay, so next we have the pool membership fees. Somebody wanna tell us about that?
Thank you.
You know what, the rec committee met last year before the end of the, before the end of the year, just so that we could have this done for, we have to, you know, get these out and our bills go out at the end of February. So what we did was, we did an increase like we have the last couple, it's definitely two years, it may be three years. We do 2% on the resident fee memberships across the board, and then whatever that increase is, we put it onto the non-resident members, because for years we were doing 2% across the board, and it really increased our non-resident family fees to the point where they were over what the surrounding towns were, and even the private clubs in Scotch Plains, which is where a majority of our non-resident members come from. So we went 2%, across the board. I don't know, do you want me to read the numbers?
No, I don't think so. We all have it.
Okay, but, but it is 2% over what the 2020 regular fees were before they were cut to the, you know, the 75%.
Okay, so while we're on the pool, one of the things I think we need to have the rec committee look at is the shortfall that we've been running into the last few years. We try, I think each year we try to address it, so I think I'd like the rec committee to go back and take another stab at it this year, especially because we probably don't know what it's gonna look like this summer. So let's just take a look at it and see the recommendations we can come up with to try to bridge the. Next we have the authorization to purchase the fire pumper. As you know, last year in November and December, we passed the ordinance to fund the purchase of the fire pumper. And the reason we did that is so that we could buy a chassis, basically, so we would get a discount. So I guess this now is the resolution authorizing us to actually purchase the fire pumper. Is that accurate, Jill?
Yes.
It is?
Yes, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Oh, I caught you off guard, huh? Okay, so anybody have any questions on that? Anyone on the fire committee have anything else they wanna add? Okay.
No, nothing there nor to add.
Okay, so next we have the fence right-of-way exemption. Are those residents in waiting or what's, they gonna say something or are we just gonna look at their paperwork and make a decision on that?
Martha informed them they could be on Facebook. Matt Flynn, what would be the method for them to participate if they so choose?
I think, you know, perhaps you'll calling in and speaking. But, yeah, we're joining the meeting, but so.
You want, you want to just give them what the call-in numbers are in case they don't have it?
Yes.
Or they post it on the bottom of the Facebook feed? Or they are?
Mayor, I see Rachel Coswell and Peters in a meeting now.
I don't see her, I see her name. Rachel, are you there?
Yep, I've been on the meeting.
Okay, good. All right, great. So what, so do we see them trying to dial in or make any comments or?
Well, currently, right now, let's see here.
Hey Glenn, I thought you said they were gonna, they wanted to be participating in the meeting.
Yes, I assume that they would access the meeting, because that's why it's on the agenda. They have every right to.
This could be them right here.
The 908 number?
Yeah, 09, 0960. What is it, star six, unmute yourself?
The phone number to call in.
Closed, sorry.
Hi, Rachel.
I've been here, sorry, my, my screen was closed.
Yeah, we all thought you weren't here.
No, I've been here, sorry.
Matt, what is it, star six, unmute yourself?
It is, it's star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute yourself.
I think, there you go.
Hi, good evening, everybody.
How's it going today?
Good evening.
Good, how are you? Happy New Year, happy New Year to everybody.
Can you give us your name and your address before you start, please?
Yes, this is Scott Brown and Leanne Paulinoff, 315 Indian Trail.
Okay, so I know you're here for some kind of exemption to put your, to really, at this point, to allow your fence that was already erected in the right-of-way, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, yes.
So you wanna give us a little short synopsis of why you think we should do this?
Yes, so I know I sent over a lot of, a lot of information and pictures and timelines and things of that nature, just so everyone can have, you know, a clear, a clear picture of our situation. So going back to September, you know, we started doing our due diligence of, you know, the restrictions of fences for corner properties in town. And, you know, we were told one thing and, you know, based on the information, we started to do the landscaping around the property. We planted a number of trees, 14 trees that we originally wanted to enclose with the fence at around 10 and a half feet. And then we made, you know, every intention to, you know, come before the council in the last couple of months, but obviously it wasn't, it didn't happen, it wasn't meant to be. So, yeah, we're here tonight and we sort of wanna see if, if we can have your permission to keep the fence where it is. I don't think, you know, it's not obstructive from line of sight, a vantage point from the, from the intersection. We believe it fits in pretty well with the neighborhood, it's tasteful, it's, you know, it's not intrusive in any way. And it's more for the safety of our, of our dog. We just had to, we had to make a move and put it up and hope to come before the town and, you know, tonight. So that's kinda where we stand. You know, we hope that you guys will see it the same way we do. We would prefer, obviously, not to have to uproot all the trees and the fence and move it all at this point. But, you know, happy to answer any questions you guys have, comments, concerns, we're here to help.
You did receive that zoning permit for Mike Disco, our engineer, is that correct?
Yes, so we got that end of October. We, when I originally reached out to town in September, we were told that, you know, certain fences have certain restrictions. A four-foot fence could be 10 feet from the curb on a corner property, a 30-foot, a six-foot fence had to be 30 feet in. So, you know, we went with a shorter fence to, you know, help fit in with the neighborhood a little bit better.
But before you put the fence in, you were aware that there was a restriction that it had to be 15 and a 0.5 feet off of Indian Trail because of the right-of-way, is that accurate?
So we were aware of what, of what Mr. Disco told us, that it needed to be 15 feet, but we were also aware of what the previous town official told us, 10 feet.
And so we planted, we planted our trees at 13 feet for that reason, because our trees were at 13, so we could put the fence at 10. And we weren't told 15 until after we had planted the tree.
Yep.
And we would never really like to keep the trees enclosed.
Sorry, our dog is barking at the storm.
The permit came in on the 23rd, we issued it on the 29th with the 15.5-foot stipulation.
Good.
Of what month, Mike?
October, October 23rd, it came in. That was a Thursday or Friday, I believe, a Friday, and the following Tuesday, I saw it, we issued it on the 29th with the stipulation of 15.5, and I communicated that to Mr. Brown.
Anybody from council have any other questions of Mr. and Mrs. or Mr. Brown, I'm sorry I didn't catch your, your wife's name?
That's okay, it's Leanne. Before, sorry, it started, it started to interrupt if anyone was about to speak, sorry, we're just on our phone. We made, we made every effort possible to come before the town in November and December. I think there was a miscommunication and a lack of communication amongst us and, you know, Mr. Disco, and just trying to figure out who to contact and who to send over all the information to come before the town in November. We had to, we had to delay the install of the fence twice in order to get permission from, from the council to put it where we wanted to. But two months went by and we simply, we just couldn't wait any longer. It would be three months in the house. We needed a safe space for our dog to go out in the back, and we just, we had to make some sort of move here. So, you know, if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Anyone have any questions?
Let me just ask a quick question. Any reason why the fence, your fence couldn't be at 15 feet, 15.5?
Yes, so we, we had already planted 14 trees to be enclosed by the fence, and they are right at 15 feet. So if we were gonna, if we were going to plant the fence or install the fence at 15 feet, we'd have to uproot all the trees and move them about four feet closer to the house, which would be a big.
You could put the fence behind the trees though, isn't that correct?
We, we could. That was not our original plan. We want to be able to protect the investment we made in the trees itself. And there's also a pretty tall, I would guess, like 40 or 50-foot tree that's just on the inside of the ones we planted, and that would block the fence from being installed on the inside.
When was it that those bushes were planted?
They were planted the second week of October. So right around October 15th or so.
And so Mike Disco, I believe you got the lead on October 23rd, they should be at 15.5, is that correct?
October 23rd was when the zoning permit was submitted to the town.
Any other questions? Okay, so we're gonna take this in under advisement in executive session and you'll be notified as to what our decision is, okay? Thanks for appearing tonight.
Okay, thank you guys very much, appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
Tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna discuss that in exact, so let's move on to the next item, which is the proposed ordinance for solar panels. John, you wanna chime in and maybe Mike and tell us what we're doing here? You gotta mute yourself, John, you're still muted, John. There you go.
This is in response to the, a question that had been raised by a resident, and we told the resident back in November that we were going to look at the situation and in all likelihood adopt an ordinance that would make for a better situation than currently exists. The current situation is that if somebody wants to install a solar panel, they wind up having to go before the planning board, making an application to the planning board, which is expensive, cumbersome, et cetera. So after we had those communications with the resident.
I think there were two residents, John, if I'm not mistaken, right? Martha, maybe you can.
I have a car, I have a Mr. Casia, that's all I have. He sent two different.
Yeah, no, it was him and another Mr.
Galopoly.
Yeah, Galopoly, so there was two.
But in any event, so there was two, but in any event, what we did was to look at the way that a number of the surrounding towns have addressed this problem, and specifically some at Westfield, Kenilworth, Warren Township. And after looking at the different approaches that have been taken by the surrounding towns, and after talking with John Chadwick, who is our planner and also does the zoning work in Warren Township, the conclusion was that the best way to address the problem would be to simply add solar panels to the list of accessory structures that we have in our zoning ordinance and let them be treated as such. So that if a solar panel otherwise conforms to the requirements of an accessory structure, the Borough Hall will be able to issue a permit for the construction without any further applications being, having to be made to the planning board. If on the other hand, there's any non-conformity, then they would have to apply to the planning board. I talked at length with John Chadwick about it and how that implementation of the concept is working in Warren Township, and he says it's working very well. So that's going to be, that is my recommendation and John Chadwick's recommendation. And if council agrees with that, we will have in your Friday packet, a, an amendment to our zoning code, which will add to the list of accessory structures, solar panels.
My understanding was one of the concerns was the number of trees that would be cut down in order to accommodate the solar panels. Do we have some requirement or mechanism in the ordinance? Or are we gonna put that in there as to how many, a limit on how many trees they can cut down just to accommodate the solar panels? Because I know, I think that was a concern of the, of the planning board, and I believe that was one of Mike's concerns. And certainly is one of my concerns, we don't want people cutting down a lot of trees just to install solar panels. So is that gonna be addressed in the ordinance, John?
We could certainly include that in the ordinance, yes, if that would be council's view. I mean, Mike Disco, how would you feel about that?
Yeah, I think that's prudent. The one time we did reject one, they proposed removing 13 trees, and nobody thought that that was a good trade-off. So I think most of the time they come in without tree removals required. Obviously, it affects the efficiency of it if there are tree covers in the way. But I, I think that should be included, that you either limit or prohibit tree removals for those.
Mayor, I think we should put something in there that's part of the application if we're gonna go with the accessory structure that says, are you, are you gonna move any trees, like a checklist that they have to sign off on? And if you are, we have to, you know, prove that by the borough engineer or something like that, because exactly that reason, because at least this way people can't say, oh, I didn't know I couldn't do it, or, you know, whatever, make excuses up. I think it's a good additional checklist that should be signed off by the resident or the applicant.
Do you think we should put a maximum number, and if they exceed that, they gotta go to the board?
I think any should probably be required, because we were taking down a couple giant, even two giant trees to, you know, might need.
We have, we have an existing ordinance that limits the extent to which residents.
It's not in place.
Yes.
Right.
The tree ordinance.
So I suppose that, going back to the, the way the process would flow, if it were to appear that implementing a solar panel as an accessory use, we're going to require that we, that the resident violate the current ordinance that limits the extent to which residents can, can take down trees, that would be one way of controlling the situation. The other way would be to simply include a provision that it would have to be reviewed, as Bob suggested, by Mike Disco, and Mike would have to sign off that trees would not be implicated, which would, I mean, I don't think that would be a terribly cumbersome or difficult process, Mike, if you had to sign off on it?
Well, I think, I mean, I think maybe not involve Mike within, unless people sign off yes, that they're gonna remove trees. You know, people say, no, we have no trees to remove, then it just moves forward, you know?
We could do that too, yeah.
You know, but then, then Mike, then.
I like that idea.
It would be limit the amount of, you know, things Mike has, Mike has to look at.
Mike's gotta be, be used them anyway.
Yeah.
Right, Mike?
Well, I'm saying.
You do anything.
But I'm saying, if you, if we're making this up as a new ordinance, why wouldn't not put something, just to check, are you planting, do you have any trees removed on your property because of the installation of solar power? If they check yes, Mike might need to ask some more questions. If they say no, then, and maybe even say, understand that there's a borough ordinance for tree removal. Some people.
That's five, Bob, that's five trees, I think. That's a lot of trees, especially if you have big ones. I don't think we rely upon the five-tree ordinance to protect us here. I mean, I think maybe we should put, you know, if they're gonna cut down any trees, it's gotta be approved by Mike.
Yeah, exactly. Well, just a question, if they answer no, then it's, then it just moves forward and there's not any, any more inquiry.
Hey, Paul?
Yeah.
If, if, if someone wants to put up a solar panel, if they cut down five trees and then wait a couple of months, and then ask for the, to put up the solar panel, what's the difference?
Well, if that's the way, if they, if they wanna try to do that, Renee, that's fine, but I don't think we should, you know, people wanna be sneaky and do it that way, okay? Then, you know, that's something I don't know that we can prevent. I don't think we have those kinda people in Mountainside. I think that.
If you don't have those type of people.
We should have, we should, wait, let me finish. We should put them on notice that if they're gonna cut down trees, then, you know, Mike's gonna take a look at it and he's gonna have to approve it. I mean, you know, don't give people the plans to build bombs over there, you.
Let's, John, what's some kind of ordinance we could look at next month or something like that? You know, maybe just with some kind of inclusion of that, a, a, a check off or something that would, you know, give.
I'll have something in your package on Friday to look at.
Okay, very good, John. All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions? Do you have any more comments on the, the solar panel? I think the main purpose is to clean up, clear up the docket for the, the board of adjustment. I think I see two or three cases almost every session where they're, they're discussing solar panels. And if Mike says only one's been rejected, then I think it's better, we can streamline it and save people some money and, but we wanna make sure that it's done in a, in a fashion that's consistent with what, you know, Mountainside wants. So, okay, so the next thing is the proposed ordinance for stormwater control. I guess that's you, Mike, this is the annual review, is that what that is or?
This is a NJDP mandate to revise and update our stormwater ordinance. It's required to be done by March. I think, I think John had a model ordinance that we were using.
Yeah, the, they're pretty much telling us what we have to do. And Mike and I had talked about how we would comply, and the conclusion is that we will recommend an ordinance that minimizes the extent to which there is any further impact or restrictions in terms of our activities here in the borough regarding stormwater. In other words, we want to, we have to comply, and so we'll do what we have to comply with no more.
But is this, are we gonna have to go back and retrofit our stormwater sewers now because of this or no?
Now, the real gist of this is that they're mandating that green infrastructure be incorporated in major developments. It was done tacitly prior, but now they're mandating that be, be looked at. They've ratcheted up some of the control issues on some of the tech techniques that you achieve the mitigation. Again, it only applies to major developments. They've added language in there clarifying what the major development is, because since they implemented this in 2004, 2006, somewhere in there, some entities have chosen a piecemeal approach to not be subject to the aerial limitations of it. So they've clarified that. The borough can be more stringent and apply it to, for instance, residential projects. I certainly wouldn't recommend that, it's already pretty onerous and be nothing but headaches for the, for our residents to do that, so.
So this mainly has to do with commercial properties, Mike?
Yeah, major developments which are quarter of an acre of new cover or one acre of disturbance. So it's really gonna be tailored, in Mountainside's case, to commercial properties. Certainly any major new prop, project, and maybe some projects substantially reconstructed could, could be impacted as well.
This isn't gonna impact any of the current developments we have going on in town, though, right?
No.
That can affect the barns track?
No.
Okay.
Anything that's been through the process prior to the March, end of March deadline will be, will be protected. It does require county review, just like it did 15 years ago. Generally, they think the county will take 60 days to do that. They can approve it, conditionally approve it, that type of thing. The county's gonna get deluged with 21 of these in the, in the next month or two. So this is not rocket science for the county. Whatever comments they make to one, they're probably gonna make to everybody. And I don't think they wanna take the position to impose anything more stringent than what DP already is imposing on it, on its already existing rules.
Okay, great. Anybody have any questions?
No.
Okay, so, so number 10, I think it's not really accurately put on the agenda. It's not the appointment of our director. We appointed Keith as the OEM director at, actually, I appointed him and you guys confirmed them at the We-Ord. This is simply to set what salary he may get, so we're gonna table that and refer it to A&amp;E with the understanding that any meeting they have, they're gonna notify Keith, and if he wants to attend the meeting, then he'll be able to, to do that. The next thing we have is the zoning office. The next thing we have is the zoning officer, we need a little more work on that, so we're gonna table that for tonight, and we'll revisit that possibly at the February work session. We have the, next item is number 13, that's the fire department radios. Renee, you wanna give us a little summary of what's going on there?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I missed number 12.
Did I?
Yeah.
I took my glasses off. No, I thought, no, we're, we're tabling that, the communication...
Okay.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, let's back up for a minute. The zoning officer, we are not going to, we're not tabling that. Glenn, I think, has got a, he wants approval to advertise for a new zoning officer, so he wants to, he's put together a classified ad that he wants to put, I guess, in the League of Municipalities and wherever else we, we, we put those classified ads, is that correct, Glenn?
It has not yet been crafted, Mike Disco and I will work together on that, just looking for the permission to craft that, and I'll distribute that to the council prior to its publication.
I think that should go through A and E.
Yeah, should that go in A and E next week when we have the meeting, ready for that meeting?
Yep.
I don't think A and E covers zoning, I think it's public works.
No, we cover everything.
I don't think you cover everything, right, so let's not be so quick to...
No, we do, Paul, because, the only reason I say that is because this came to the table before, when we had a resume that came to us in June that was tabled for the zoning officer, and I had talked to John Post about it, so if that's incorrect, I apologize.
All right, well, whatever committee John is supposed to be reviewing, I'll let them review it, it doesn't matter to me which one it is, just wanna make sure it's done properly, and then they'll have a recommendation. I, I think that we, at this point, if, I don't know that we needed to go back to the council, though, so whatever committee is going to be reviewing, they need to tell Glenn yea or nay, we're talking about a classified ad for a zoning officer, I don't think we need a full council input on it. So if anyone objects to that, then, you know, I think that's the best way to handle it. If there's any questions, you know, you can defer them to Glenn, and Glenn can get them out to the council if necessary. So 12 is the one that we're tabling till, I mean, till next week, I'm sorry about that, I have my glasses on now, I can see much clearer. Now, now we're 13, which I think, Renee, you're gonna...
Why are we tabling 12?
We're not ready to, to do that just quite yet, we have a little more work to do on that.
Okay, the fire department met, and we approved to get some new radios for the, the fire department. These will be the 700s, and they're, they're safer for them, they'll be able to communicate far better, and they'll also be able to communicate with other members of other fire departments in Union County, so it'll help in that regards. And it's, it's around $120,000 if I'm, for all the radios.
How many radios, Renee?
Um, what was that?
18.
Huh?
18 radios and space stations as necessary. Tell all the radios we're replacing.
Well, the, the problem with the radios that we have is, we have the 400 series, so, so problem number one is, is that the system that the 400 uses is not being maintained, okay? So that, that's, that's problem number one. Problem number two with the 400 system is if they get, if, if they're on a call with Springfield, or Springfield is on a call with them over here, or any other town, they can't communicate with them, so they have to bring another radio with them so that they can communicate with the other towns in, in Union County. And the third problem is they've had issues with the, the 400 radios, that they've not been able to communicate either with themselves, or with, with the, with the police department. So we feel it's best just to put an end to these problems and just have them have new radios.
The fire up on Coles Avenue, I guess it was about a month ago.
Yes.
They, they had, they lost communication with dispatch, they were using their cellphones to communicate with dispatch, they also lost communication, it was a mutual aid hall fire, I believe, there was at least four or five other fire departments there, and they weren't able to actually communicate with the other fire department, because the other fire departments are using the 700...
Right.
At this point, so I, I, that, I think is what brought this to a, to a head. I know that there was also some issues with the tower at the 400, for the 400 radios, it's up on, in the, in the reservation where it got knocked out, and it was out for some time, and it wasn't, it wasn't addressed in a timely fashion, which again, hurt the communication in the, for the police department. I understand the 18 radios, there are, they're estimating about 17 people in the fire department that are act, actual, you know, they're very active, they're the ones that actually show up at the fires, I believe there's one extra one in case one goes on the fritz, or they have a person that maybe is not normally at all the fire, so he'll have, or he or she will have a radio. I think initially they wanted quite a few more, but they pared it down to what they actually need, so I thought that was a good accommodation by the fire department, as well as was negotiated through our, our fire committee and Glenn, and Glenn Morton, so I think they did a good job there, so.
How old are the old ones, do we have any idea?
I think they were 15 years old or something like that, Glenn?
I suppose, certainly over 10, but, but for the most part, it's just that that is, you know, like a third-generation cellphone, it, it's just not being supported anymore.
Do we, can we sell the old ones off, do they have any value, can Martha put them up on like the NISI bid or whatever, and, or? Is that something?
No, I wouldn't think, why not, maybe the people that bought the fire truck would want them.
Yeah, I'm saying somewhere that's like maybe a more rural, a rural area or an area outside the country could, could, would be interested in buying them instead of just tossing them, so that's, you know, Martha could look into that, maybe.
Hey, flip, flip phones are coming back too, so maybe somebody will...
Never know. Never know.
Okay, um, does anyone else have anything for the agenda? I know we have bills and claims, but I don't think we're quite there yet. Does anyone else have anything they wanna add as far as business or topics for discussion? I did meet today with Martha and, and Jill and Glenn, and we're getting together a capital plan for next year. We should have something to actually go over with council and discuss at the February work session, because we're gonna have to probably move relatively quickly on these, on a bond anticipation note, because that's probably the way we're gonna go, so we'll have something in, in February for everyone to take a look at. Okay, at this point, we got bills and claims.
It resolved by the mayor and council of borough, borough of Mountainside, that the following bills of the persons named and for the amount stated below have been duly audited and found to be correct this 12th day of January 2021. The same be paid after council's review if and when funds are available, and that the mayor, council president, administrator, and treasurer are hereby authorized and directed to sign and deliver warrants for the same, and that's for $225,796.35.
Okay, the, the bill list is also available through the clerk's office if anyone has any questions, so we have a motion to pay the bills, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, poll the council, please, Martha.
Councilwoman Andre?
Yes.
Councilman Deerkis?
Yes.
Councilman Mattajak?
Yes.
Councilman Messler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pacifico?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peter?
Yes.
Okay, just as a reminder, Deanna, you have the invocation at the next council meeting, which is January 19th, and at this time, do we have any, I guess we'll start with council comments.
Yes, I have one. It is now time already for kindergarten registration for next year at Beechwood School, so if anyone wants to register their child for next September, please call Lynn Chisule, the phone number is 908-301-9104, extension 200, and again, that's 908-301-9104, extension 200. Thanks.
And I'm sure it's on their website too, for anyone that wants to take a look at it. And, and the other comments?
No.
Hey, Paul, you're breaking up.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we're opening up the audience participation.
I'm, I'm, I'm very sorry, Mr. Mayor, could you repeat the last five seconds of what you had said?
You locked up, Paul.
Um, I said, hmm, last five seconds, about the... Basically, I think we're just going for audience participation.
Okay, we, we...
The invocation is Deanna Andre, can everybody hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and the regular meeting is January 19th, and we are gonna have an executive session, but we'll do that after audience participation. So if anyone in the audience wants to make any comments, now is the time to do that.
Okay, we are, we're currently on a 25-second delay, so I recommend giving it about 40 seconds.
Good. Martha?
Yes.
You're gonna have to read the executive, I don't know what I do with it.
Okay.
To go into executive session.
I'm sorry, there are, there are no public questions, that I see.
Okay, so at this point, we're going to adjourn and go to an executive session, we're gonna be discussing the, the fence right away, so Martha, you wanna read the notice, please?
Yes. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act of the state of New Jersey permits the public to be excluded from certain matters to be discussed by the governing body, and whereas the mayor and council desire to discuss litigation, contracts, and personnel, which are matters where the exclusion of the public is permitted, and whereas public disclosure of the results of this discussion will be made as soon as the matters discussed have been resolved by the governing body of the borough of Mountainside, now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the borough of Mountainside, that the aforementioned matter shall be discussed in closed session upon adoption of this resolution.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a motion to exact...
So moved.
Second.
He froze again.
Paul, you're totally lost, I don't know what's going on.
I don't either. Okay, so we have a motion to go on exec, and we have a second, we're gonna go into exec as soon as we can get on, okay?
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay, so we're back in public, we're going to need a motion on the request by the homeowners on Indian Trail for a waiver of the 15.5 requirement for their fence to be 15.5 feet off of Indian Trail, a no vote... Valley, a no vote would indicate that we are not granting them an exemption, a yes vote is that we are going to be granting them the exception, so I need a motion for that resolution.
They're moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, Martha, poll the council, please.
Councilwoman Andre?
No.
Councilman Deerkis?
No.
Councilman Mattajak?
No.
Councilman Messler?
No.
Councilwoman Pacifico?
No.
Councilwoman Peter?
No.
So the resolution to deny, we, now the resolution denied them the exemption, I'm gonna instruct our, I guess it would be our borough engineer to issue them a violation letter, and give them 30 days to rectify the, the violation. Okay, I don't think we have anything else that we have to go over in public, so I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn the public session.
So moved?
Second.
Second.
Second, okay, we're adjourned, thanks, everyone.